Okay, well, we're a little, it is four thirty-one, so we will go ahead and call our special board meeting of the Butler Community College Board of Trustees to order, and we'll start off with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Start off, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I so moved with approved the agendas presented.
Have a second.
And I'll second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow is absent. Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six oh with one, with one missing, so do we have any? Do we have any public comment? Here going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on then to our lone action item, which is approval of the property and liability insurance numbers that we now have final, and I'll turn it over to Kent to talk about that.
Yeah, we just say that, you know, we went through this at the regular board meeting this month, and there was Kerp was just doing some final touches, they touched us for another five thousand dollars about. So nothing has really changed other than that increase. Makes the premium per year eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and sixty cents, and I've had a lot of detail information there, so I would open it up for questions or a motion.
Anything in here, Kent, that was surprising to you from what we were expecting?
No.
I mean, based on our prior discussions.
Right.
And Kent, what's the deductible again?
There's a six hundred thousand self-insured retention. That's our main.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, would entertain a motion to approve the property and liability insurance proposal as presented by Kerp?
I move that we approve the property insurance as proposed by Kerp at eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents.
We have a second for them.
Second?
Any? Any discussion about it?
I'll just make a comment, maybe from last meeting. I don't appreciate the fact that we don't have readily available data on whatever buildings were, what? We had no, nowhere to pivot at all, just like, okay. So I'm gonna vote no, I know it needs to pass, that's the only reason I wish, I wish we would have some sort of plan and another option, than just take it or leave it last second. But we discussed all that last meeting, I think.
I feel the same, but I said my piece last meeting, so I'm pointing being a dead horse.
I would point out, if we don't have four votes, then we don't have insurance as of June, as of July.
You'll have four.
I know, it'll be pointing out.
Just really not worried about that.
I mean, worst case scenario, although yes, I have to, but I'm currently buying my vote. I know we're over a barrel and we gotta do it, I just, I don't appreciate being in that position, so. But it is what it is, so.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
No.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow is absent. Trustee Shear?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Smith?
No. Okay, that passes four to two. So we have insurance continuing through next year. Would entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
I would move to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
I never get seconded.
Oh, you want a second?
I'll second by that.
And we'll let Kim second it.
I usually just sit quietly.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow is absent. Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six oh, thanks, everybody, for that, and we will now move into the work session. And Shelley is jumping into the hot seat, so I will turn the, I will turn the court over to her.
Okay, thank you. So we're on, okay. So thank you for allowing us to come to our meeting this evening and talk about health insurance. I know you're really excited about that. I am, I'm super excited, and so we do have our IMA folks that are here to kind of give us a little bit more deeper dive into kind of our renewal for this year. But where I left off with you last time was I brought to you the proposal that we were working on for our rates and also for negotiations as far as what we were kind of faced with, with the renewal for this year. So we have been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the last three years, and we went self-funded two years ago, we're in our second year, the close of our second year of self-funding. And we have really enjoyed relatively flat premium changes for the last two years. We had a slight increase three years ago as we were looking at going self-funded. That year, we did have an increase. We didn't have an increase last year, and we didn't have one the year before, once we went self-funded. We were able to maintain our costs at a really, at the same level, not that it was cheap by any means, but at the same level as the previous two years. So when we came into this year, and we're looking at kind of what we could expect, it was a little bit of a shock that we saw that we had a pretty significant increase this year. So part of that increase is due to the stop-loss insurance, that's a given, that that's gonna probably have some type of trending increase around twenty percent each year, and that was no different for us this year. And then what really kind of affected us was the projections on our claims, and that's where we're seeing the highest level of increase in our planned premiums, is that we really need to cover the increase to stay at expected where Blue Cross Blue Shield and our consultants have told us that they expect us to run this year. So those two things combined, the stop-loss and the premiums, or sorry, the claims increase they were expecting came to roughly one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of an increase this year. They did go back to Blue Cross and ask for a little bit of, you know, wiggle room somewhere, they gave us a little bit of a discount on one of our fixed costs, which is the administrative fees to administer our claims. So they took off a little bit there, so it came down to just over one million dollars. What we did ask is that IMA go out to market, because anytime there's a large increase like that, we wanna see what else is available and what we might, they might be able to bring to the table as well. So we did go out and market, there are two other companies in this area that will, that, that do health insurance, and that's Aetna and United Healthcare. Aetna was unable to give us a competitive bid, meaning they couldn't do any better than what Blue Cross was showing, and actually, they would have come in higher than Blue Cross. And so United, which we haven't actually bid much with in the past, did come in with a competitive bid. And it was about half the amount of increase to our premium costs as what Blue Cross Blue Shield was showing. We had several discussions about this, and some of the things, particularly with IMA that we, that we learned, were that anytime you're gonna change to a new insurance carrier, you're gonna have something called disruption, meaning some of those doctors that people are used to going to may not be covered under that new network, or their insurance, or the coverage they have for their medicines may be at a different level, things like that. So we asked for some disruption information, we were able to get information on about forty percent, forty to forty-five percent of the claims. And that showed that there was going to be some disruption in some of the providers, most of them were in Andover for some reason, but there were a lot of them, and a lot of times, that's more like specialty providers, kind of like your chiropractic visits, your mental health visits, and things of that nature, kind of the ones that maybe are kind of on the, on the fringe and not always included in those networks. All of the major providers, like the hospitals and things like that, were included, so that, that wouldn't have been a problem. But there were a number of providers, and then there was also the question about some of the meds. We were a little concerned about the disruption there, but then there was also the, your first year will look like this. And that's where we saw the discount, right, of getting in under the million dollars by about five hundred thousand. And but second year, we know that your stop-loss insurance would go up at least twenty percent is the trend, and probably another fifteen percent due to utilization. In addition to that, they projected our claims expense, the exact same as Blue Cross Blue Shield, because they really have, we haven't been insured with them, so that's the data that they had available to, to look at. So as we talked that through as a team, and saying that we only had about forty-five percent of the claims reviewed for disruption, we felt that it was probably better to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield at this time, and, you know, incur that additional expense, because next year, we'd probably increase it, and again, another six hundred if we went with United. So it made sense to us to stay with what we are familiar with and what we understand on our cost ratios. So we did send out some information. Trustee Winslow had asked for some information about our plan renewals and things like that, we did send that out, I believe all of you received that. But I wanted to have the opportunity to bring IMA, who are our trusted consultants and, and our brokers, and they have been for the last four years, and have them just kind of give you a little bit more of the breakdown of how the market is looking, the trend, and how our renewal came together, and then allow you to ask them questions as you would, would like. Okay? Any other questions for me right now? Okay, thank you. All right, you guys?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. I have a handout for you, but I think we also may have something we can put up on the screen.
Yeah, I do. Do we have a product review? Uh, yeah. Or I can say. What are we? One hand over there if you'd like, or you could all kind of hang out here. I will be, and I have the presentation, so I'll just set up here. Great guy. I'm in the meeting, we just need to share my screen. Okay. I don't have all of that, okay. Hi, guys, thanks a lot, thanks, Shelley, that was, I mean, Shelley does such a lovely job of talking about where we're at, so I appreciate Shelley for for getting that kind of level set. I'm Christie Powell, I am the Vice President of IMA. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Is it on? It's on the recording. Okay, got it. But Linda's also on. Yeah, great. Linda, can you hear us okay? Thumbs up if you can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you to Shelley for giving that nice synopsis of where we're at right now with the renewal. It's always lovely to hear a client articulate back where things are, and Shelley did a very nice job, so we'll dig in. Again, I'm Christie Powell, and the Vice President of IMA. I'm your executive sponsor, I'm here as the relationship manager for Shelley as the conduit to the IMA team, but really, the, the brains behind the operation is Vanessa. He, she's your account executive, she's gonna go through all the details, and Nick Johnson is your account analyst. So these two are gonna talk more than me, but I'm here and will probably provide some color or commentary, so I'll step aside and let Vanessa take the mic. Sure. And if we forget to be in front of the mic, just let us know. We don't normally play football like this, so Nick's the numbers guy, and I wanna make sure that he answers any questions that you might have. Like Christie said, I'm the account executive that works with the Butler Community College team. We've had the pleasure of working with you since 2018, and we have made some good headway as it relates to the medical plan, where we were, where we were projected to go, and then where we are now. So what we have in front of you and here in the room was PowerPoint, and then I need, the one thing I do need is approval to share my screen. Whoever owns that. There we go. Yeah. Okay. Got it? It's thinking.
There we go.
There we go, all right. So this year's renewal, was it a good, a pretty one? We were expecting a pretty significant claims increase. Stop-loss came in a little harder than we had anticipated. And that's Blue Cross of Kansas's current stop-loss pool, it's just, it's running a little more, it's running a little poorly in comparison to the way it was two, three years at this point, three renewals ago, two years renewals ago. So there is that piece that will be consistent concern moving forward as we talk about opportunities outside of this renewal. Just to give a little background, last year, we did get some additional savings from the renewal, it was at five and a half percent, we reduced that to four and a half by increasing your specific stop-loss level, meaning each individual person on the plan has a hard cap on claims liability, because Butler Community College is paying the claims as an administrative services-only self-funded. So we were able to negotiate that down. I do wanna show history, though, because I think this is a better picture of where we've been, where we're going, and where we are now. Butler is going to be that blue, dark blue on the left hand, and then the bottom line. Seal, which is a common self-funded benchmark. Their trend line's gonna be the dark, or the light blue, and then that top dotted line. And what this is showing is since engagement, which we didn't, we didn't answer twenty seventeen renewal, but since engagement, we have twenty seventeen information. And since then, the average trend, even with this renewal included, is at three point four percent for Butler Community College. We had two years, three years, Shelley, where you didn't have to increase Butler Community, Butler's contribution or the employee's contribution, right?
Correct.
So even with this larger increase this year, this shows that you have been winning more than losing, for lack of a better term. And when it comes to healthcare, unfortunately, we rely on people not being sick, right? Like, that's the risk in healthcare, and so this year, we had some pretty significant claims. That is part of why the projections on the claim side, Nick can run through that a little bit, are heavier or a larger increase, because we've just had historical large claims in the last twenty-four months. We have a claimant at the top that is a six hundred thousand dollar claimant that will be perpetual every single year. And so that's part of the reason we went self-funded, because we can put it in a smaller pot and that stop-loss, not affect everybody. But as it relates to trend, we've kept you at half of the seagull average trend, and we've been able to, up to this point, help the college support no increases on either side. Any questions there?
Okay. I might have one.
Yes, go ahead.
When you say we have somebody that's going to the six thousand mark? Is that correct?
Six hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. That's an employee?
That's a member.
So to us, it'd be an employee?
Could be a family member.
Okay.
That's, they're enrolled on the plan.
Yes. Thank you.
So if our, if our, I guess, retention for each employee is seventy-five thousand, Blue Cross is gonna go right off the bat, but they're gonna pay five hundred twenty-five thousand on a pocket every year on just one.
You got it. And so does the market. So when we go to market for stop-loss, like with the United Healthcare offer, we negotiated quite a bit to ensure that they didn't what you call laser, meaning seventy-five thousands, the college is capped right now on claims. You can increase an amount on a specific individual in the contract and say, for this individual, we know it's six hundred thousand dollars. You, Butler Community College, are going to pay three hundred thousand dollars for that individual person. And so on the UHC offer, one of our main focuses was ensuring that that wouldn't happen with them on the stop-loss side. So that will be an element that we'll probably talk about in future years as well, as it relates to the stop-loss, because it is consistently going to be there. So we're trying to capture it as strongly and as efficiently as possible.
What difference would it make if we know the cost is there, whether we pay more directly versus the carrier notes they're working on?
And we can do that. If we had the laser, though, it would have been completely uncompetitive from a cost perspective, because we're adding the two, the three hundred thousand minus seventy thousand, seventy-five cents, twenty-five? I'm doing math by head. That would have been added into your claims, and so we would have rated for that in claims, and it would have made it non-competitive. Yeah, thank you. What other questions? I'll keep going.
Right.
Something we'll be facing next year, and then the next probably eighteen to twenty more, four months to come, is just inflation. We're coming off of the pandemic, changing the way claims are processed and paid, the way people are accessing especially specialized healthcare. And we also are seeing a trend of specialty drugs controlling common illnesses like psoriatic arthritis, or RA, rheumatoid arthritis, the Embrils, the Humeras, all those commercials you see on TV. We're seeing a higher clip of those being prescribed, and I think that's because people are finally getting back into their specialists and being seen regularly. Outside of that, healthcare trend has always followed inflation by, by about eighteen months of here. So what this is showing you is since nineteen forty-seven through two, twenty-two, the top line is medical inflation, and you can see it peaks right after it does on the general inflation side. So we're expecting and anticipating between one point seven to two percent increase in claims overall because of those factors. Hospitals are now able to negotiate, because we're back to daily doctoring, that means increase in costs, so are professional providers. So we anticipate some sort of increase on general inflation that will affect claims in the next two to three years. We have included inflation factors in our claims, and so has Blue Cross. This is coming down the pike, though, so I just wanted to let you guys know that for next year, really. Okay? Nick?
So on this slide, we are really looking at your twenty-twenty-two plan year versus your twenty-twenty-one plan year, so really, since you moved self-funded, it has a monthly breakout of all the different costs that make up your health plan, and then you'll see the totals in that blue kind of boxes, and then under that, in the orangish color, is your twenty-twenty-one plan year. So I kind of put some bullet points on here just to easily compare a few of these facts, so looking at enrollment numbers, enrollments decreased a little bit, and that's on a member basis. So that's gone down about three point seven percent, and that is looking at your employees, your dependents, your spouses, everybody that is on your health plan. And then we move on to the admin fee, that stayed relatively flat this year. Your stop-loss premiums did see about a nine point two percent decrease. That is because of the stop-loss deductible change that Vanessa hit on, on that first slide. And then you'll see the big one is the net claims. So this is the claims that the college paid out, and you'll see about a twenty-three percent increase in claims. And then we also looked, like to look at things versus expected. So in your twenty-twenty-one plan year, you finished the year running at ninety-four point one percent of expected, so you ran a little bit better than expected last year. This year, today, you're at a hundred and six point four percent, so you're actually running above where we anticipated the plan year. Yes, so expected claims, that is when we get into the projection of claims before the plan year. So Blue Cross will come in and say we are gonna project your claims at four point three million dollars for this upcoming year. So we track that every month to see how you're comparing it.
And it's also a marker, so when you talk about claims, sorry. This, it's tight, it's tight room. When we talk about claims in self-funded health plan, the claims are the things that are variable, right, and it's the majority of your cost. So you have markers, you have a maximum liability, and then you have what we call an expected, that's your hundred percent line, that's where they anticipate, based on historical trend, for your plan to run. And so when we talk expected max, we're talking about fixed cost plus where they think you're gonna run on the claim side. Max is gonna be a maximum liability at twenty-five percent above that, so a hundred and twenty-five percent of expected. And that's a hard line college stops paying at that point.
Are the premium, the premium calculations based on expected or based on?
Everything in here we have based on expected.
Yeah, so when we're budgeting, we're looking at what those claims are expected to run, and then what the fixed costs are, and that's how we set the budget.
And then this next page goes over the budget in more detail. So you can see the reserve started out around that one point five million dollar mark. The twenty-one plan year, there was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar surplus, so you ran better that year. You're able to add on to that reserve a little bit, and then this twenty-two to twenty-three reserve is about a three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar deficit. So combining all those together, we're estimating the reserve to be about one point three million dollars. One way we like to look at that is how many months of claims do you have in that reserve? So right now, you have about three point seven, three months of claims in the reserve, which that's a healthy reserve, anytime you get below that two and a half months of claims, it gets, starts to get a little scary, but right now, we're at a healthy spot, and that's why we are recommending for this next year, let's fund that expected for this next year and continue to build that reserve, or at least stay pat.
I would say this is a component of self-funding, that this is why we wanted you guys to go in this direction, because over time, that one point three million dollars will grow. And, you know, your, your public sector counterpart in the community has been self-funded for many years, they're sitting on large reserve accounts. If you have a bad year with a very large reserve account, you can buy that renewal down with your reserves. And that's why we wanted you guys into this mechanism, it's just gonna take time, it's not, it's a commitment to a pathway that needs some building, and so we're on a path that is a, it's a journey, if you will, and so we've gotta keep chipping away at this and building this up to where you guys can feel good about kind of controlling your own destiny a little bit more with your, with your annual renewal cycle. And I will say, you have good, you've had really good years, so that's great, we're facing a bad year, we don't wanna take losses at the end of the year, we wanna budget for that. But overall, knowing the budget, knowing where the reserve is now, it's all about being able to keep that healthy, right? And as a public entity, many times, public entities will choose to have a larger reserve so that when it's budget time, you're not trying to dip into that in a way that's so significant that it's depleted. And so that's a philosophy that we'll continue to discuss with the college, to ensure that long-term, we're on the right path there.
So what would you suggest our reserve balance be?
So that would be like back to your philosophy.
Right.
I mean, we would say no less than two and a half months, but the philosophy would tell, would tell us how much you would want to hold in there, and that could be higher, based on your philosophy. And currently, with the, the heavy use of prescription drugs driving the cost of the plan, those are going to hit very early. So it's point of service, right? A prescription happens, the cost goes directly and it pays. If you have a very high-cost drug, you're going to meet that specific stop-loss, maybe two quarters in, halfway in. And so that affects the overall reserve, it impacts earlier than a hospital stay in May, if you will. And so, and also thinking through when do our, when are our claims going to hit? Is it gonna be early on in the plan year, or is it gonna be a little bit later? That helps us anticipate and continue to derive and find philosophy. So long-term, we can say, okay, we wanna keep two and a half months of reserves, because we're comfortable, we've left Blue Cross and become, we call them bundled, where we've precision purchased and put together a health plan that's for us, that works for us, and we have more cost control levers, so we feel more comfortable with the claims. So those are all things that we've been discussing internally with our core team, with Shelley and our core team that we work with, and Kent and Carrie have been there quite a bit. And so I think we're in the stage of stability, if that makes sense. And once we have one more, this plan year, we're going to be a little, be able to be a little more aggressive as it relates to recommended reserve. You've got what you call an immature plan year in your first year, and so that's playing out now. And so by the time we talk about twenty-twenty-four renewal, we'll have some good claims history as a self-funded client, to be able to continue to develop that philosophy for you.
Just as a question, the where we have the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three year to date at negative three hundred and fifty-two thousand, and then we have the arrow at negative five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, what is that, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand represent again, what? What figure?
So that is annualizing the, the year-to-date total, so if you were to run as you have the first eight months of this year, that is what we would estimate.
So we would suffer a five, a half million dollar loss.
Yeah. Now, you go on the calendar year here, then?
This is on a plan year. So.
The plan year.
Plan.
Plan. And then, so.
A calendar year, is that fiscal year for the college?
So that is October through September.
Neither. Right. And that's a decision based on the timing of contracts in when the, right Shelley? I mean, my understanding is the timing of contracts and when they're available and when they go active, ten-one is very common in higher education because of that.
Do you do any other uh, are there any other community colleges that you provide this kind of financial services and advisement for? Which which ones locally?
Right now I work.
Any in Kansas?
Yeah.
Okay.
I work with five of the community colleges in Kansas.
Colby Highland, Neo Show.
Colley Highland.
Scott.
Scott Butler.
Butler. We work with um all the private colleges.
Seward.
Seward.
And we have the, we run a the Private College of Kansas program, the KICF.
Not, you know, and that, this is great. I mean, this is really nice proposal, but I think what I. I was looking for um from Shelley was a comparison on how we might compare you consulting. Versus a different company uh. I know that Butler Butler County stuff insured as well.
Mm-hmm.
And um they're going in a whole different direction than what we have. And I just wondered why. One of the things that they have adopted, for instance, is they'll get well, and I'm not trying to pick you up.
No, you're fine. I'm just.
Go ahead.
You're fine.
I'm doing my fiduciary.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And I'm asking you, have you really made some great comparisons? Um, they've got some really great programs that if you smoke, you automatically, if you either you either take a test at first and you don't. Or you automatically pay another hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it is, or maybe fifty dollars a month, whatever. You just automatically pay that. Do you ever recommend these kind of programs? And and has the college here or any of your other ones adopted any of those?
We have clients across the spectrum as it relates to adopting wellness type of programs, like a smoking cessation program. The one hesitation, and we've talked the talked to our core team that we work with here of a tobacco surcharge. Because that's really what you're doing. You're charging more for a tobacco user than you would a non-tobacco user in your rates. Part of the decision is based on philosophy. Because it's a leasing type of benefit, right? They have, you have to ensure if somebody is caught smoking that you know about it.
Yeah, they have to actually take it.
Exactly.
To get on and take a test.
Yes. And so that happens maybe once a year at open enrollment or in the middle of the year or the end of the plan year, things like that. But what happens when somebody starts smoking and they get caught in the middle of the year? So it's it's really the philosophy of how you're going to advocate internally and be able to take on that program.
So short answer is no, there are no programs like that right now.
No, right now, no. But we do have many clients doing that. We do have quite a few clients that are doing that.
Yeah, we've talked to Shelley quite a bit and her team about work site wellness opportunities.
Yeah, because I really am a big believer in that, for sure. There's you can cut your cost in.
We we have um a whole team that only does work site wellness for our clients, just like the county's representatives do. And that's something that they're willing and ready to do. Um, it's just, we've been tackling a lot of other things like getting you guys self-funded, getting you guys your budgets set right. We have an opportunity um in the back for some really cool savings on the pharmacy program, which is actually really driving your plans. So we use data to kind of drive us in the direction that we need to be going. And right now, honestly, your pharmacy prescription is where we need to be leveraging. Um, not to discount cessation programs or other things, but we're looking for big ticket items for you guys, not small ticket items.
How do we compare with other colleges then? Are they also having a pharmaceutical issue?
Everyone's having a pharmaceutical issue.
And they have wellness plans as as well.
Very few colleges and schools have a successful wellness program. You can think about changing someone's behavior is very difficult. We're here to try to save you guys millions of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we can do that with some other kind of aggressive programs. The other thing I'll mention about the other client I mentioned, you know, is they've been self-funded for many years and they're unbundled self-funded. The college here is just now in their infancy of their program. And so ideally, yes, we would love to take you guys to a third-party administrator, pick some prescription for same programs. That takes time. That takes the college getting comfortable with the mechanics of self-funding. So that is a journey that the colleges are on and they weren't comfortable yet getting ready to fund an unbundled self-funded program this first couple of years. But most of our clients that are Butler size are looking to leave the Butler, to leave the Blue Cross chassis. Uh, we'd prefer you to look outside of that candidly and that's why we went to UMR. Um, and I will also say this, you're not like other community colleges. You're more like a sophisticated private college, in my opinion. Um, you don't operate like other um smaller community colleges.
In what way?
You're larger. You're quite a bit larger. You're the largest community college in central Kansas compared to um Kansas City, Kansas Community College. So there's.
Butler, I mean, or Johnson County.
Or Johnson County. And those are not even like community colleges. Those are like University of Kansas. So to compare you to other community colleges, I think is a disservice to you guys. I think you guys should be comparing yourselves to like a larger private college.
Well, to not take these things into consideration, I believe also is a mistake.
I agree.
So while I understand the infancy, believe me, I came from thirty years or so of business.
I get it.
But to not have those options at least explored or at least part of a ten-year plan or even a five-year plan.
Yeah.
Is surprising to me because we have a lot of really smart people that work here.
Yep.
So I would think that would be somewhere in the plan.
The biggest thing you guys need to know about IMA is we work for you. So we take direction by your team and so we'll do whatever the the college team asks about it because we work for you.
I think it's unfair to suggest that people haven't considered that as an option. I think they explain why it's not an appropriate timeframe right now to do that.
Your comments are appreciated and I made mine and I thank you guys for those. Um, I just understand I come from a different world and I was constantly told here, we're an academic, we're not business. But you know, that's just not the way I roll. So.
Yeah.
I roll spreadsheets and I roll numbers. I don't roll other things.
Next, your guy, if you're a spreadsheet, I follow spreadsheet TikTok to know how you use spreadsheets.
There you go. Well, whatever you gotta do, you gotta do.
Well, and Hunter is how it's it's helpful for us to.
I would like to uh, I would like to have that part of our plan. So we'll see. See what the college does in the next year or so and see if they can get closer to.
Yeah.
So so on the on the self-funded journey. Um, about how many years does it take to go from that infancy? You know, I know I was with USD two-five-nine and and we were self-funded for. It took many years to get there, but like it's not a. Uh, you know, people think it'll happen overnight. It just doesn't happen overnight.
And I think that's a good um, that's good feedback as well. Um, a lot of times you get into a self-funded arrangement and you have two or three really, really good years. And you have very healthy reserve in those mature plan years, if you will, so including what you call runouts from the previous plan year. Um, claims paid in the next plan year. It allows us to have better footing. Now, having a healthy reserve or being in your infancy stage.
Yeah, we got a pretty healthy reserve though, you would say. You did say that.
You do. Um, but we do have a projection of claims that is higher and you're running at your deficit right now the way that you're funded. And so we want to ensure that at some point that number is not red, the three fifty-two, one ninety-six on that page. We want to ensure we have more blacks than red there. And so when we say infancy, we're talking about appropriately budgeting and ensuring that those costs. Are outweigh are not outweighing the budget itself. Um, I don't think that there is necessarily a timeframe. Um, I specialize in unbundling self-funded, so that really um aggressive type of program model. So that you can really pull all the levers you want as it relates to cost containment. And so I would love to get you guys here tomorrow, just because I believe in it and I'm passionate about it. But I'm also passionate about successful, long-term strategy as it relates to your plans. So it would be a little irresponsible in of me to say we're ready when we're running out of deficit right now. But that's why we do look at these on a monthly basis. That's why we do meet with our core team regularly. And if we need to do any of that, any work sessions there, Shelley's really good about navigating those internal dialogues. To ensure that we can bring in whatever you need.
So then.
Better understand.
So then we started out with a reserve balance of one point five million.
Hmm.
We're down to one point three. Do you suggest we go up to two million? Is that or?
If you look back at the model is you want to have at least two months worth of claims. Our claims run about three eighty, four or five a month. So you want about eight hundred thousand at least in your in your space.
Okay, okay. So if we anywhere from eight hundred to one point, we're we're okay.
As we're budgeting accordingly, we're taking in enough to pay out what we're what we're paying out in claims.
Okay.
That's the, that's the goal.
Right.
That's your, you know, whatever you're you're budgeted for pays your bills, right? But occasionally you're going to have a bad month and you've got this reserve there to help catch you in those situations. So you're not in.
Right.
Yeah. And that's really what the reserve is for. Long-term, if we get it to a point that philosophically the college is comfortable with and ready to make some changes. It allows a ability to say buy down, we call it buying down or using it for increases in stop-loss or something of that nature. Um, and so we want to encourage and continue to ensure we're building a reserve that's sustainable.
We had some overage the first year.
You did.
We were. What did we do with that then? You know?
It remained in the reserve. So that's actually on the right, Nick, the one ninety-two.
The one ninety.
One ninety-two, two sixty.
Yeah, yeah.
That was all the reserve.
Hmm, and that includes both claims paid in the runout period right now.
So this was just the the October twenty twenty-one through September, it's twenty twenty-two. At the very end of that plan year, there was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar surplus.
And so it started at one point five when you originally moved because of a one-time um investment from the college. So you were very unique in your ability to be able to align funds before the plan even started. Most employers are saying, oh, we've got a budget to our maximum liability because we've got to start building a reserve while we're administering the plan of paying claims. You were at a very good place because of that and that's how we were able to end in a surplus. But currently you're running out of deficit.
Any more questions on this budget?
Appreciate the representation and.
For sure.
Additional information.
Any other questions you have?
I remember that you have yet another.
Yeah, we do. Sorry.
So we did want to show this because this is really kind of what is driving your plan. There are twenty members. So again, members, uh, we're looking at employees, dependents, spouses. There's twenty members that are over um half of your stop-loss deductible. That's what we used to track this. So ranging anywhere from thirty-eight thousand dollars all the way up to four hundred and sixty-one thousand. And this is year-to-date, we're looking at about eight months of your plan here. Um, you look in that blue kind of chart at the bottom, they're driving about forty-five percent of your plan. Um, so these twenty folds um is where the majority of your claims payments are going. And then looking at last year, they're driving about thirty-six point eight percent of your plan. So we are seeing a little bit of an uptick there.
They're all active except for.
They are all active except one member is turned, so they are no longer on the plan. Um, that is member six.
And what percent of that would you say is pharmaceutical?
Um, over half is pharmacy-related.
On those top payments?
Yes, yeah.
Can I jump really quick while we're on the topic of pharmacy? So one of the reasons we chose to go self-funded with the college is because of the pharmacy spend and the cost of that. In a self-funded arrangement, even with Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas administrative services only program, which is what we're doing. Um, you can at least get eighty percent of what we call manufacturer prescription drug rebates. And what that is, is money that a prescription drug manufacturer for their medication provides in credit. To a pharmacy benefit manager, which in your case is primed with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They will net out typically, most typically, net out the cost of the total cost and the rebate dollars. And whenever you're fully insured, Blue Cross holds on to that savings. When you're self-funded, at the minimum, you get eighty percent of those rebate dollars flowing through to college. So we do have it a small um little less transparent than we would like through line. Because pharmacy was going to just hit hard year after year because of that cop payment. And so that is something that we wanted to ensure getting in a lot of the conversation that we've had around changes and partnerships. Is because pharmacy is driving it so much. Um, Nick, I think you included your RX rebates there. So do you want to go through this, sorry?
Yeah, so on this page, we wanted to look at what if you remain fully insured these years versus making that jump to go self-funded. And we also do have the RX rebates listed here. Um, but twenty twenty, you're fully insured, you paid about a total annual premium of five million dollars. And twenty twenty-one, your actual self-funded costs were four point nine million dollars. Based on the fully insured renewal you got with Blue Cross, that would have been five point nine million. Um, so there are significant savings in that year one of making the jump to go self-funded. Um, to Vanessa's point, the RX rebates are listed there. In year one, you only received two quarters rebates because there is a lag time. So but still you received a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in uh pharmacy credits. In twenty twenty-two, um, I'm annualizing this current plan year. Your total costs are about that five point six million dollars if you annualize it. Um, and then what I did is I uh underwrote the uh Blue Cross, if you were to stay fully insured. And that was coming in at about an eight point nine percent increase if you were fully insured um this prior plan year. Uh, which is about six point three million dollars in total spend. So again, uh, about six hundred thousand dollars in savings. And then twenty twenty-three, looking at your current renewal, we're projecting the cost to be at that five point seven million. Uh, we would have anticipated a fifteen percent fully insured renewal on this timeframe, bumping you up to seven point two million dollars. So significant savings this upcoming year. And a lot of that has to do with the stop-loss side. You're only paying claims for individuals up to that seventy-five thousand dollar mark. If you're fully insured, it would be that six hundred thousand. So Blue Cross would be um hitting you hard on your uh fully insured premiums. And then also you're getting the benefits of the RX rebates, which um is a little over three hundred thousand per year.
And I think as it relates to the change, and the reason we show this is just to say, did we make the right decision? Because anytime you get an increase, you're like, oh, whoa, is this what we should be doing? Um, and so just to highlight Nick's work, he does use Blue Cross's underwriting um. Form as well as trend factors that we see. So he's not even utilizing just IMAs underwriting. We've built a tool that can replicate what Blue Cross is doing using their trends. Um, I do think their prescription drug rebates is a big win regardless. Um, we don't move clients on rebates alone, but this was the right move for the college. Um, I want to skip forward a little bit and talk about pharmacy outside of rebates. A program we've discussed, uh, site fifteen, apologies. I was telepathically telling you guys. Um, we've talked about some programs that can cost contain. We've talked about levers. A lot of those levers can't be pulled unless we exit a Blue Cross of Kansas relationship. Just because of the ability to cost contain within the model they have. Something that we can do and something we've talked about is international sourcing. Um, right now pharmacy is driving a lot of your costs. We can utilize a administrator, actually internally, we have a unit that utilizes um international sources. To obtain the medications and the prescriptions that are costing high costs.
What of what international sources?
It's from tier-one countries, so um Canada, UK, Australia, and New Zealand. They have at or higher FDA requirements as it relates to the medications being prescribed.
As long as it's those.
Yeah, it's not China. That's the one I always get.
Um, can't blame me for asking.
Yes, no, it's a great question. It's so quick. We get it all the time. Um, right now, our unit is specifically working with a Canadian pharmacy that has not had any type of disruption as it relates to wait times to get prescriptions. Um, there are shortages all over the country. There are shortages in Canada even on Ozempic is a good example. Um, there are shortages all over the place and they've been able to maintain the clip of keeping it there. And so we're focused on that singular pharmacy. But a lot of that is tied to just knowing they're going to have the medications.
Do you guys have any idea when the, you know, what do they get for so many years after they develop a drug, they get?
Patent?
That protection.
That's it. That's the word I was looking for.
I think protecting patent is eighteen to twenty-five years.
I think it's twelve in the pharmacy side.
It is.
Yeah.
Twelve years or twelve months?
Years.
Twelve years protected.
And so Huemera just started.
Just got started.
Yeah, and Huemera just started, just started um asking or uh putting out a new product called Huemera Sitrate Free. Which takes away some of the pain of the injection. And so now prescribers are using that because it took away the pain of the injection. And so even if patents exist, it's a little more Wild West, if you will. Because it relates to what that replacement will look like. Versus ten years ago, we were only worried about like high-cost brand medications. The specialty market hadn't even bloomed yet. And so now we're in a market where all of the R and D money and these manufacturers is going towards these drugs. And so now we're in a market where all of the R and B money and these manufacturers is going towards these drugs because they know they can make a lot and there's not really price. Controls in the United States for that yet. And so when we're talking these medications, that's kind of the cycle we're looking at. Even if they're going generic, they're going to try to find another way to patent that medication effectively and continue to charge more.
Because of what the previous one you just explained.
Yeah. That's the trend we're seeing.
I appreciate you explaining that.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm stuck on one of these two.
And every good vacation a doctor takes. Is.
Well, to be.
It's throughout the company.
You can see the annual cost. So what we did is we ran an analysis. If we took all the medications we could get internationally sourced, we utilized your current. We, we looked at what it's costing annually through Blue Cross Prime, uh, actually Accretos, the specialty pharmacy. And then what it would cost to obtain those internationally. Um, on the far right side with that orange box, we have so much blue. Sorry, it's hard to get color that goes against blue. Um, the total savings would be if everyone participated, six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. So there is savings there. Any drug that we obtain this way. And outside of the health plan would be removed from your rebate dollars. So we're, we're trading hands. But this is a more sustainable way to capture cost savings immediately because we're looking at the, at the prescription drugs on a monthly basis. Um, so.
Have the choice to say, no, I want you to keep paying for my drugs.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Voluntary.
And this thing in a hat to be voluntary because Blue Cross won't let us exclude these drugs from the plan. If we were to take you to a third party administrator, we could certainly exclude these from the plan. Blue Cross will not allow that. That's against their pharmacy benefit management contract. So this is a kind of a workaround. For us to capture some savings and still keep you with the care that that's that we have today and then work and then build you guys for future considerations to adopt maybe a different pharmacy.
With one thing and then Blue Cross or somebody else with drugs.
Um, we're doing it right now.
What? Oh, I meant just internationally. Yeah, no, Blue Cross Blue Shield, if you're going with Blue Cross for your ASO contract, you can't prescribe, you can't pick a different pharmacy benefit manager.
And have it run to your deductibles and have all that go. Did you have a question?
I do, since I'm on Medicare.
Yeah.
Me too.
My pharmacy has now. Come, is compounding my drugs.
Uh huh.
And that's saving quite a bit of money.
These drugs here, these drugs here are not compounded. These are all drugs that are already coming to their homes via the mail today because they're all coming from a specialty pharmacy. So these are not drugs that would be a compound of, but one, these are injectables. Things that are coming with a needle and pen clicking and that type of thing. And so this would just simply shift it from, they're getting it. All of these predominantly are coming to their home or maybe to their doctor's office. They're all coming through the mail on ice predominantly.
What's the, how do you sell this to a member?
They make it free and they're co pay. So right now they're paying a co pay for this. I think it's fifty dollars here for the college. And so we're giving them the stroke for free and that's the incentive to engage. And then it's a cultural position for the college to share that. Hey, we're self funded. We're trying to keep your costs flat. If you would engage in this program. Um, it's allowing us to keep our benefits rest, but also give you a zero dollar plus your prescription. That's wonderful.
What's your average participation rate?
About sixty.
Sixty.
Six, forty to sixty, but we had a community, a financial institution have thirty seven impacted members with medications we could source for six one. Sorry, I'm not in the mic. I'm so nervous about the mic. Um, six one, we rolled it out. We use our internal team. We really like, we really think they do a good job. Um, we start prior to the effective date. So we uh align the medications and the individuals prior to. That contact information if necessary, started reach out calls in middle May. Um, they had thirty seven, all but eleven had engaged and signed up. Before six one, by six one, and then last week there was only eight on the list that hadn't answered the phone. So that is a really good um example of a client that really invested in the education. So they did a very heavy open enrollment messaging, helped them please understand why you would want to do this. Um, because of the zero dollar um incentive, it makes it pretty simple, the messaging pretty simple, but we support the team in that way. Kayla comes out for open enrollment every year, so she um does a great job with this. This is an example of something where instead of like smoking surcharge us, we are trying to capture and save costs long term. And that's kind of. When I think of long term stability and long term strategy. It's capture and remove the cost or reduce the cost versus um asking employees to pay more and take steps. Um, and so a lot of times those are simpler because we can make, especially in a self funded environment. And especially if we were to go into that more precision purchasing by near partners, we can actually improve the benefit. For the member and still save costs because there are other entities that we can work with to do that. So I don't, I, this is even if we don't do this, the shirt's still there. We're doing it.
Take over page eleven and then.
Absolutely.
Wrap up and some questions.
Let's do it. That's a next slide.
So page eleven is the renewal. Um, looking at the top left, you'll see current costs at the four point nine million dollars. The renewal at expected claims, where we're projecting the claims to be is just over the six million dollars. It's about a one point one million dollar increase or twenty two percent. We did list out in the bottom right, just all the different components that make up your self funded health plans, your administrative costs. Um, as Shelley mentioned earlier, we were able to negotiate that down a little bit. Um, it was coming in flat. We were able to reduce it by about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the specific and aggregate stop loss, uh, those are your fixed costs that you're paying every month to have that stop loss protection. So you're only paying up to seventy five thousand dollars. Um, that is where we saw a pretty substantial increase, about the three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars or about twenty seven point four percent. Um, I will say Blue Cross's stop loss pool is running very hot. We're seeing anywhere from. I would say fifteen to twenty five percent increases on almost every year. And then.
Go ahead.
I would say, and then the last piece is the claims, which is the majority of your plan. Um, we are recommending about a twenty two point three percent increase there, which is uh right around seven hundred and eighty four thousand dollars.
Sorry, the claims are the dollars you'll keep if they don't pay. So the largest increase is coming from claims. We want to fund for it. So that you're ready. But if only a ten percent of that hits, you're only going to pay that in the claims. Other than that, that money's yours when you're budgeting for it. It's going to go into that reserve to start building that reserve even further. And so. While you're getting an increase in claims, that's the variable, variable cost. So you could very well. Win because things take the, the turn in the right direction from a healthcare cost perspective.
I don't like that.
I think, uh, and we can open up the question, Shelley. I think what um. Would be interesting is to continue the discussion internally about opportunities outside of a administrative services only arrangement. Um, and doing a true process project so that we can analyze opportunities. Um, while also identifying philosophical, uh, kind of philosophy around contribution model, models and budget and reserve. I think we're in that position where this next year we can really start having those in depth conversations. Um, and so the questions you've asked today have been great because it aligns with thoughts we already had, especially in talking with Shelley. Um, Shelley, do you have anything else you wanted us to specifically cover?
No, I think you kept, you caught on most of the things. I just would ask if they have any questions, we could uh entertain some of those. I do want to speak um just towards the end a little bit about our contribution. Analysis of what we're looking at from a college perspective of the contributions. For this premium uh going forward into the new year, what we budgeted for and then um go from there.
Okay. Just real quick, Shelley.
Yeah.
If. Well, if I remember right from our meeting. We pay about eighty seven percent and the employee pays thirteen percent. So. Our share would be five point two, five point three million dollars.
Um.
And then the employee would pay the other. One or eight hundred thousand or whatever.
So if you take a look at um slide thirteen. Page thirteen, it breaks that down for you. Nick was good enough to kind of break out that contribution analysis for us. So it kind of shows you um in the one side is our current. What our current payment is, okay? So the total premium is five million, three hundred and one thousand. The renewal's coming in at six million, four hundred and fifty, right?
Right.
And then it shows you the ER premium. That's the, uh, that is the employer side. So the employer paying eighty seven percent of the premium currently, we're paying four million, six hundred and thirty six. And the renewal will be paying five million, five hundred and seventy nine, and then an increase of nine hundred and forty two thousand dollars. The employee premium, which is thirteen percent of the overall cost. Comes in currently, they're paying six hundred and sixty five thousand. And then the increase to them would be eight hundred, eight, eight hundred and seventy thousand. So it's an increase um of two hundred and five thousand dollars for the employee side.
We have a tentative agreement of that in negotiations or is that?
We do.
We do.
We do. Um, and I did bring, I don't know if you, you know, want to see this, but basically kind of a side by side. Of the medical dental premium of kind of what, what we're doing, what we, what the employee pays this year. What we're paying and then what the premium is going to be for next year and what we'll be paying and what they'll be paying.
Here's some.
Um. I'm not sure when it got handed out last, but this is the most. Current I can give you, I was going to hand it out. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was looking for.
Yeah, so.
And I will know.
Before I don't know.
I will note that this slide here, we've talked only about medical prescription drug costs so far. We've actually pulled in. The dental premium and the IMAD agreement that we always put in there every year and to be currently per month. So this is the actual totals tied with those, those numbers that are always included in the premiums already.
Shelley, have you got a copy of this?
Yes.
Shelley.
Yeah.
So we're ensuring three hundred and sixty nine employees or?
Yes.
Members.
No, well, it's employees. And then there's probably another, we have like seven hundred and some odd members. So it's employees is the three sixty nine right now.
Okay.
Yes.
So I was just dividing that number. That's about fifteen thousand dollars per employee.
It's pretty close to that.
Contribute.
Yes.
While they only pay on average twenty three hundred and fifty a year. But it's a great benefit to them.
It's an amazing benefit.
Getting.
Yeah, so traditionally the college has paid the majority of this premium. We've been trying to balance it a little bit more. Um, as we can, we're trying to stay at the eighty seven thirteen. But some, some employees pay twenty to twenty two percent of their premium. It depends on which plan they're on. Um, but others will pay less because the premium is less for that. But um, the college traditionally has paid. The majority of these premiums.
Encourage those negotiating to keep that in mind. This is very hard to pay on.
Yes, it is. And they know this is a big increase this year and this is, you know, it's hard for everybody. And they're getting, you know, a decent increase as well. Um, but uh, this kind of lays it out for you so you can kind of see what that looks like for both sides, but. Um, we, we are at that point now and we'll come back to you in July. With a proposal for this to go into effect in October. So, um, but this is kind of what we've been talking about, how we've kind of been able to, to um. Care down the, the premiums as best we could, according with trying to keep it that eighty seven thirteen percentage at this time. Like I said, the last couple of years, there's been no increase to anybody. So I think they understand and I, you know, they, they, they must that this is an increase to them.
Is that about whatever other colleges pay, other community colleges?
I, I would say no to that. I would say that, that we probably pay a greater lion's share of the premium than others.
Like.
It's everybody's.
What is the average?
It's hard to say because just.
Kansas.
For example. They, some pay a flat amount. Here's your seven hundred dollars. You can use it towards any plan. That's all they're gonna, you know, give, okay? And others like. The um community colleges in, up around Kansas City, um, they pay a greater portion. They pay more than we do, but their plan is. Is more expensive or their, you know, their employees still pay about the same as what ours do. Um, but they pay more. And then there, so it's, everybody's got a little different methodology on how they're structuring things. Uh, so it's hard to say, you know, on a general rule, the percentage is X. But from a business perspective, when I came out of business, just like you did, ours were typically. Uh, seventy thirty for like a family plan and an eighty twenty on a single or a little bit more on this, you know, paid towards a single, but. That's even, you know, probably shifted some too since, since I was last doing those, but. Um, but this is a generous plan. It's an expensive plan. Um, you know, obviously a single coverage or sorry, a, a family coverage. The total cost is twenty two, forty three um a month. That's twenty, what, six thousand dollars a year? So it's, it's a, it's an expensive proposition.
Yeah, I think most companies have gone to, if both of them worked and.
There are, there's.
Company pays or her company pays or his and his or hers or whatever, but it's split up.
Yeah, some of, one of the gals um that um. Is in our offices. She's saying her husband works for Sprint, Spirit, sorry. And and that they just kind of start doing that, that they created incentive. If you go on your, your spouse's coverage, we'll give you money. You know, so they're, they're doing things like that to try and drive people off their plan. Yeah.
It screwed up which uh public teachers because all those uh spirit employees. Quit theirs, got money.
Yeah.
Went on.
Yeah.
And it, it raised.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
There's lots of uh.
We were.
Creative thinking going on uh to try and reduce costs. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've seen a generous.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's great.
So everything you guys presented, I mean, it's very thorough and I appreciate it just from, since I wasn't here, we guys did all this initially doing the self funded. That makes a lot more sense and that's appreciated. The one slide we didn't touch on was slide twelve. Which compares Blue Cross to the other bid that you got, right? Um, I understand, I mean, last year my premium was, it jumped by twenty percent or so with Blue Cross. I did the same thing, went out and said, okay, who else can I get insurance from? Looked at the two and thought. No, thanks. I'll stay where I'm at. And so I, I get that that's what the college wants to do. My question is, you as their representative, do you feel like? This other option was inherently bad. I understand that it would potentially go up next year as well. But if I understood correctly, it sounded like the increase would just kind of get to where. This increases now, which would still be an overall half million dollar savings. So. Would this switch be more of an inconvenience or a catastrophic, oh crap, everybody's running for the hills mad? Because that's what me jumping would have been versus honestly, that's what I'm trying to wait because a half million dollar savings is not small.
Shelley, you want to hit that?
Oh, okay.
I can, I'm happy to give my thoughts, but.
Yeah, so.
I would like both to be honest, because as a representative, I, because you're not the one.
Yeah, 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 there's, of course they don't. No offense. I'm tracking with you totally. Yeah, so.
Talk on behalf of the employee.
Yeah, and, and I would listen to both, but I would like.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Go right in.
Um, savings. Half a million savings looks great for sure. There are some pieces to that puzzle about. How the, the members would interact with the plan and the disruption that we didn't have full access to claims data because Blue Cross wouldn't release it. To be able to do true disruption. So we had a percentage. Of the data so that we knew about forty percent disruption. We had sixty percent, we had no idea because they wouldn't give us the data to be able to fully analyze it. And that's the fight we're having right now so that we can work on that in the future. So some of the recommendation was tied to the disruption that we don't know about can be very impactful, especially on the pharmacy side. Um, and that does take time. It does take costs on the human resources side. There are costs to making a move without knowing disruption. Um, Butler Community College has done a great job. Uh, offering rich benefits to their employees and we want to ensure that that trust continues with the employees as well.
Sure.
And so part of it was kind of that soft disruption conversation of the cost outweighing. And being able to do a really strong analysis, maybe even next year to do a really strong analysis as it relates to that. Now that's, that's the soft side. I'll, I'll do that part, but I'll let Nick look at the numbers and highlight some of the other reasons.
One of the things that I wanted to point out was where you're seeing the majority of the savings is on the stop loss premium side with the U, making the move to UHC. Um, it's a little misleading because we're not truly comparing apples to apples as far as stop loss contracts. The UHC option is what we'd call an immature contract. Um, which is why you would be hit with that twenty percent increase next year on, and then on top of that. What your trend increase would be, which varies anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent. So really you're looking at a. I would say conservatively anywhere from a thirty to a forty, forty five percent increase.
Okay.
Because of immature, because right now your Blue Cross will shield contract is going to pay your run out claims, right? It's, it's a, it's a permanent contract. So we move you to UHC, we don't have to buy a mature contract. We'd only buy the twelve, twelve, but we still have to show you that when that matures up. We're, we're.
All bets are off and.
Yeah, unlike a fully insured contract where you're resetting up that lower number. This is really just the contract is going to mature up. At renewal, we're going to be rolling you to a twenty four, twelve, like what you have with Blue Cross or maybe a twelve, eighteen. And so. That's why on paper it looks good, but it really.
And so that's why on paper it looks good, but it really isn't once you mature that contract up. So we call that maturation, then you're going to apply that trend to it, and that's how we're getting to that estimation.
If you did switch to UHC, could you then mandate the international drug policy aspect?
Yeah, I mean, you can never mandate it. It's not a program you can require. Um, we could do that with Blue Cross too. Um, outside of the health plan.
He's asking if we had more flexibility as a pharmacy benefit manager with UMR or UHC versus Blue Cross.
Got you.
Blue Cross won't let us carve out the specialty. We could find a pharmacy benefit manager with UMR that would allow us to maybe plug in some more um, cost containment with manufacturing assistance and specialty. Whereas Blue Cross is not letting us. So I think the answer is yes, we have our flexibility with the UMRs and the Maritimes of the world versus what we have with Blue Cross at Kansas, and that's just a Blue Cross at Kansas business division. Their number one focus is protecting the member's experience. And so what they're, what they tell us is we don't want the member to go to the pharmacy and not get this drug because we believe that's against our brand. Whereas KPI and IMA understand that you guys have a business to run and we're trying to find the savings. And so that's why these voluntary solutions are a nice kind of bolt-on with Blue Cross. But yes, ultimately, if we can get you guys over the hurdles and go to an unbundled solution, that kind of the sky's the limit. I think the biggest caveat there is this, this high cost payment will be laser. So we're going to have to take on more claims liability for that top claimant, and that's just something you guys are going to have to get comfortable funding to. But those reserves continuing to build helps us do that for you guys. But that's probably one of the biggest headwinds we're facing to you guys, is getting you guys unbundled where there is a laser component that's going to happen outside of those bundled carriers.
So what's the magic number where you get to the unbundled?
Yeah, it's really not a magic number. It's more about your comfortability with going self-funded and the cash flow. And right now there's still some cash flow kind of pains that you guys are having with the fluctuations of claims and being comfortable with the ebbs and flows, and, and that's not uncommon. You're just, you know.
New.
You're just new into this. And so not every client goes from fully insured to un, but very few clients go unbundled, fully insured unbundled. Most clients take some sort of thoughtful progression. So you guys are in a space that's a thoughtful progression. It just is going to continue you guys to flex. And that's what our team will always do is provide education on, hey, this is what's around the corner. Are you comfortable? We need to get comfortable with, with funding and that claim with the laser will have to come into the components of the financials.
It's one of the things that is kind of telling, just to kind of give you, you know, that risk and the comfort with risk, right? So this one particular drug is at six hundred and what, thirty-five thousand dollars a year? Last year it was four hundred and some thousand a year.
Yeah.
This drug can't be made by anybody else. Apparently nobody's willing to get in the market to make this. So this drug continues to escalate in price. You know, by twenty to forty percent every year.
Great.
Pretty soon, in a couple of years, we're going to be paying, you know, nine hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for this drug. Well, yes, we've got a stop loss available, but there's, that is always going to drive our stop loss costs. It's always going to be a part of what our risk is. And so those are the things we look at as far as escalation of claims as well as to how comfortable we are with our cash level.
Yeah, I have a close friend that's on a drug that's twenty thousand dollars a month. She was diagnosed with cancer last fall and it, it's a miracle drug. It has taken her from stage four to remission in a matter of months, but she has to stay on it forever.
Right.
And twenty grand a month.
Yeah, forever.
And that's what it is today.
Yeah.
And that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, yeah.
Yeah.
Crazy.
I think it's, I think when we talk about the overall cost comparison and that half million versus the windfall, I do think what the things that Nick has mentioned on the maturation of contract and what we're talking about is your stop-loss contract and just making sure it covers one out. That's really all we're talking about there. And that does increase the stop loss because they're including the claims that are paid after the end of the year. And so we would be, I would feel very bad as your consultant, not showing you what that year two maturation looks like. Cause if we chase five hundred thousand dollars this year and it's eaten up next year, then what have we done? We've disrupted employees without knowledge. We've moved administrators and we're back where we were. So we want to make changes that will be long-term solutions as well.
Would there be another option to say, hey, we value you, but these are the real facts of the medicines increasing. We'll keep things status quo, but any increases in these, this list of medications, you will have to choose to pay that increase as an employee or you can choose to pay zero deductible. But make it some sort of incentive to drive them away from like, nah, fine. And it costs us another, you know, half million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Be like, no. If that goes up ten percent next year, you're going to be on the hook for fifty grand, or you can just say it's free. You come from Canada.
You can do that. Well, if you're talking just the Canadian, the international sourcing that we're talking about, you build incentive and make it zero dollars for them. That's, that's easy money that talks, especially as it relates to those international drugs and where they're coming from. Because like Christie said, many of those high-cost drugs are being mailed somewhere to begin with. They're not going to their local pharmacy to fill it. Um, so it's not a different behavior for the member. You're just saying you're not going to pay for it now. We just need to know where to send it. And so a lot, most of the disruption, the hesitation, once you're able to get members to understand that, that is the easiest incentive for them to understand. Um, disincenting through member pays the difference with international would be something we can't approach at this moment in time, just because Blue Cross won't integrate with that on the, on the, on the international drug. We can change drug card to pay more for a preferred medication and allow the member, what you call, it's a dispense is written, D A W, that's what they're called. And there can be a requirement, and we've talked about that, and I don't remember where we're at right now. Um, but Blue Cross has multiple tiers of dispenses, written exclusions. So if there's a branding medication that can be prescribed as generic and has the same efficacy, if they choose to maintain the branding medication, they're going to pay the difference. So there are things like that we can put in plan. I can't, forgive me, off the top of my head, remember which, what we're doing with Blue Cross. They opened that up last year. So we can have continued discussions internally as we finalize paperwork with that. Does that answer?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, there's a way to, you want a little bit of distance in it to motivate them to take a better deal for that madness.
Yeah.
Kind of at the end of the day, we're all working together just.
Right.
So basically, the longer we go and the longer we mature in the self-funded process, we will have more options available to us as we feel more comfortable with that process and and driving those dollars.
Yeah, and the market's evolving. I mean, we meet with your team, I don't know how many times a year, but we have one, four plus times a year, but there is one key meeting that we talk about what's coming down the pack and the strategies that we're watching on every pop, and that's something that we spend a lot of time talking about, what's happening twenty-four months down the road, what you guys are keeping your eye on. Because we don't, we're not looking at this in a twelve-month, but we're trying to build a three-year, four-year plan with you guys. Can get a good, get a good pace on this. And so that's really where we're, we're in the plan right now of building, if you guys will fund it, you're getting more comfortable. And now we're just trying to build on that every year, and that's, it could be the international mail if you guys are comfortable. It could be bringing in workset wellness if that's what you guys want to do. So that's where we have those healthy conversations with yours, you, uh, to work with.
I'm not as worried about being as comfortable as I am about the amount of money that it's costing the college.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, yeah, I'd like to wait ten years to make it more comfortable, but you know, I don't really think we have that.
I agree with you. I think because of your size and because of where the claims are landing and that specialty drug, um, the lack of control in specialty drugs, especially in the US, not every specialty drug can be sourced internationally. They just don't have them internationally available to source. So I do think, and we talked to Shelley and team about this quite a bit, that we're going to have to get comfortably being uncomfortable in the next two to four years, even next year, if that's what we need to do. Um, we move clients unbundled all the time. We moved eleven clients within seven-one of twenty-twenty-two and eight-one of twenty-twenty-two unbundled. Some of those were fully insured. So it can be done. We have Nick's, the, the man when it comes to putting those financials together, truly reviewing disruption in an effective way so that we can make, like, make that decision with some of those soft pieces.
Why do we, why would a college ever, I, I, I know this doesn't exist. Why would a college ever consult? Was there, not a.
There's, yeah, absolutely. So there are, there are positives doing what we call bundling, which is the Blue Cross. Blue Cross manages everything. If it's the offering, then it's Blue Cross's offering. There's some positives to that. They have specifically Blue Cross a very rich stop-loss contract. Um, and it does cap liability a little stronger because it actually goes by the incurred dates, the date of service versus the paid date. And so there's some safety there. Um, there is, yeah, there, the laser, they don't do. So they don't ever laser members, like, so increase that amount on the stop loss. Um, their pool has historically, until the last two years, ran incredibly well. Unfortunately, they're in the cycle of loss right now and they're, they're buying it back. Um, so we're kind of getting hit from all sides on that when, as it relates to Blue Cross's stop loss.
So how many other companies or army or colleges can have that from being made with Blue Cross?
We have some, and some of it is a, um, brand recognition, size. Yeah.
Hundred-five employers has a very hard time going up. They can't fund the plan appropriately. They, they have negotiation agreements where they have to maybe have a carrier in place, a branded carrier in place. So all of them have different kind of nuances. Colby went unbundled. Um, Seward is still bundled. Uh, they're all kind of on various degrees. There's a handful on Western Kansas that are unbundled, Dodge, great vendors unbundled with BMI, which is actually out in Great Bend, Kansas. So they're all on a different spectrum because they all have different challenges and they all have different workplaces too.
Question. Is there a possibility of thinking outside the box in the future? We do, my family, we do like a concierge service.
Oh, yeah.
Where it's fifty bucks a month for me and my wife. Kids are fifteen bucks. My daughter at work today thought she broke her knee.
Mm-hmm.
Call a doctor, zip-zip in there, x-ray. It didn't, there was no emergency room visit. If we need prescriptions, they're like, it's a Dylan's, it's thirteen dollars. I mean, it's substantially, I mean, we still pay Metashare, Metashare seven hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
And this, but I think the overall savings, they do MRIs, they do all sorts of stuff, but probably eighty percent off of market price, which I think would save overall of all of our expenditures if that was, you know, offered as a benefit at fifty bucks per employee and spouse.
Have you guys?
I don't, I don't know if that's something to think about in the future as a.
Direct primary care vendors, not larger ones typically, and we're working with large schools in the city, which I'll let you guess who. I mean, we're working with massively large employers. Large employers typically don't do direct primary care. But there are some cool things that are happening in the unbundled space right now, like what you've got nine of showing, and even like what Tech Fund's doing with kind of some dual plans where one is a little bit of a different access to healthcare. Um, you kind of pay as you go. It has an app where you pick kind of belows across the provider. Um, so there's some cool things that are coming out. We talked to your system about that. Again, it just requires that ability to fund that unbundled health plan. I think you guys are probably able to do it next year. You guys are, you guys feel good and we end the year in a good place. I think direct primary care is an opportunity to pair with a plan. Some of your employees are really still going to want that PPO access, and so they look at this health plan as their compensation as part of their wages. And so I think there's that as an opportunity to explore. I'd say the large employers have a tougher time doing that just because you've got such a rural um, community here, people trying to drive to their, their, their primary care provider. They may have to go further than they want to, but I think it's something you can consider. Like Andover Schools is a client of mine that looked at that for years, and it just hasn't made sense for them because they really don't want to tell people they can't go to their doctor anymore. So it's something that you kind of have to balance. Everything with insurance is like, I call it insurance whackable. You hit one wall and another one pops up and you just have to continuously balance. Where are we really trying to go with this health plan? What is our long-term objective? Is it to maintain this rich benefit package? And the structure that we have today? If so, then we're going to have to keep inching you to an unbundled space to do so.
Yeah.
But our doctors, I mean, you know, they're emailing their next.
I know, it's great.
And it was a day, they're in Andover or Newton.
There's even like doctors on demand where you can do kind of like, um, patients, like via telemedicine, but like with an office here locally where it's just kind of all virtual care. I mean, there's a whole host of those providers that we, that we deploy, especially.
I just wanted to let everybody, we've got revenue neutral and B K D.
Okay.
Activities tonight. I don't want a cycle discussion, but we, we have other items to talk about.
Because the, you know, I think it's important for you guys to know we work like you guys. We do not work from the insurance area. We take our direction from you all and from your team. And so if you guys want to see something, but please keep such that way because we advise, like you guys ultimately decide and we don't care where you guys are at in the area.
How many people are on this team you keep referring to? Are you talking about the Butler team?
Yeah.
How many peoples on that? Cause we don't.
That's just like Shelley.
You don't know?
Well, I know we work with four people, but I think there's probably more people than that that need to work for Shelley and that we don't do on a day-to-day basis.
We also engage with the insurance company.
Yeah, we need to make our own slot. Right, you go on many. People come all vision. Special employees, operators.
Like, how many?
A couple from each group. People.
Like maybe ten, twenty?
Some, they just, but sometimes they don't come, sometimes they do come. But ultimately, decision-making capability, decision-making is kind of huge. So going before the president, finance. And um, we as the administrator are getting all of the data from our, our brokers and our partners and so forth. Working with finance on budgeting and what we're going to budget for this year for increases in healthcare. And then it breaks down to um, really getting the administrative, we might.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Job.
Happy to see you guys so much.
Okay.
Heather.
Doctor Heather. Is there any water in that refrigerator? I'll get it. Just, is there, is it there or is it in her office here?
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I was wondering why your name changed to Ken. You know.
Thank you.
I think we're moving over to start talking about revenue neutral rates and what can't we bet? Charge.
Let's see if I can share my screen here.
Linda, are you still with us?
Still here.
Okay, well, um, each of you has a little packet like this, has some, you know, I sent out, um, sent out this information last week, but I made some corrections and they're highlighted in yellow. I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. The goal here is to um, make you aware of the calendar, which leads up to the ultimate approval of the budget. And we're going to be recommending that we goes through the uh, intent to not, intent to exceed the R and R um, process. Um, so the first step in that will be at the board meeting uh, on Ju- July eleventh, the upcoming board meeting. And um,
Thanks.
We will ask the board at that time to approve the notice of intent uh, to exceed the R and R. Um, we really are not intending to ask for any more taxes next year than we received this year. Uh, we told you that at the April uh, preliminary recommendation. The intent to uh, exceed really just protects us if there are unexpected changes in the valuation, drops in the valuation. It just protects the college to be able to um, levy the exact same amount next year that we levied for this year. So the uh, first step in that will be to um, pass the notice of intent, and if you turn over to page three of this document, this is the um, notice of intent that was approved last year. One thing that we will want to put on here this year is to actually say the amount of taxes that are to be levied and the proposed mill rate. And I'm not going to go through all these documents, there's like eleven pages here. Um, you can have some time to go back and look at these before the, the next board meeting, but mostly it's just documents that were approved last year in this process to kind of give you an idea of what kind of um, documents we'll be asking you to approve as we move through this. So again, um, the basic outline of this, and this is on the front page here. At the July board meeting, we will ask you to approve the notice of intent to exceed the R and R. If you choose to do that, then at the August board meeting, August eighth, we will ask you to approve the notice of public hearing. And there's the documents from last year on page five and six. And at the September board meeting. And at the September board meeting. We will have the public hearing for R and R and for the budget. It's a combined meeting. And that will happen at the very first of the regular board meeting. And then we'll ask you to approve the resolution to exceed. And approve the legal budget and that will happen at the September board meeting. Now, if you, if the board does not. Pass the intent to exceed the R and R. We won't change the amount of taxes that will. That the administration will recommend. We're still gonna recommend the same tax levy. Same amount of taxes to be levied next year that we levied this year, but the timeline changes and that's. In note one here on the front page. And if uh the board does not pass the notice of intent to exceed, then we will have to have a special board meeting. On July twenty fourth to pass the notice of public hearing. And we would have the the um budget hearing then at the August ten meeting. So in a nutshell, that's what's in the information here that I've given you. I'd be happy to go through it in more detail or to to answer questions um that you might have.
I think I might be able to clarify it for some of us. Uh you're simply asking in case. Valuations fluctuate such a manner that the mill goes up more than. You're, you're saying you want to send out revenue neutral that we plan to exceed it, possibly even though we're not increasing the taxes. You're just doing it as coverage. Right. The last year I was so wound up about it because your, the administration proposal was like one point three million dollar increase. While allowing that. So that's why I was so adamant about not allowing it. But. This is just covering your rear. You're not asking for more than we currently asked for. And I've done it every time. I'm obviously gonna ask for some tax cuts along the way and vote yes or no, don't care. Uh if we did cut them a little bit, we could avoid the revenue neutral possibility. If it came to that. And we don't have to make a decision tonight. I'm just saying it could.
The um, the amount of, and this shows up on, um well, it's. The revenue neutral rate that the um. County has calculated for us shows on page two. This is the current document. Page two that I received from the county clerk. And the revenue neutral rate is twelve point four three one. Mills. It's about halfway down on uh item number three. The revenue neutral rate that I calculate based on the estimated valuation. Is twelve point six zero six and that's, that information's all on the first page here. Um so it's about two tenths of a mill difference.
And last year when the evaluations came out, would we have been revenue neutral or below at the end of the day? Cause I know values last year went up.
We would have lost taxes last year. Um one of the reasons for that. Is that um. Used to be that, if you go to page two here. Now pull this up on the screen. The actual valuation that the county has given us. It, there's a little yellow highlight there is um one billion. Forty three thousand, no one, yeah, one billion, forty three million, one hundred and thirty seven thousand, four oh eight. A little over a billion. But from that to get the uh actual expected valuation. We have to subtract off the pending exemptions of four million, four hundred and thirty three million. A little yellow line there.
That's like the neighborhood revitalization plans and all that.
Right, about eight point two for the neighborhood revitalization and then the TIF. You have to take off this net amount of four point nine million. And so it reduces the um. The valuation of one billion zero four three million that the county has given us. To um. One billion zero two five overall. And so that's a little bit of a change to um. Put the expected valuation on the actual legal budget document. We never used to have to do that. Before the revenue neutral, we just put on what the county gave us and then whatever was adjusted, the county would. Adjust the mill levy up or down to meet that.
Sorry, you're saying now we need to say the exact dollar amount and proposed mill levy. And that covers us on both ends of that you'll still get your total twelve point nine million. Are you saying we'll get less than twelve point nine million if?
If the valuation would go down. More than what um we're estimating at this point, what we're estimating at this point. Is guided by what the county clerk has given us. It's possible they could have more exemptions. And if we don't do the revenue neutral, then the amount of taxes now. The county would levy would go below the amount that we put on the legal budget. Because the uh valuation has changed in that way.
Can you give me some exemptions, examples like that?
No, I, I don't. That's the county clerk makes those exemptions.
I'm just saying, I can't figure out. We've, we've had no growth out here in Butler County.
Well, the valuation. But if we levy twelve nine three, twelve nine two eight. That's the, that's the amount we plan on collecting. You're saying we could collect less. A ton of exemptions happen, so we're not actually levying whatever this comes out as a, they. I, I, I believe mill levies are purposely confusing because I mean even after four years, it's like. We're still having confusing questions, but we levy twelve point nine. Right. We expect to collect twelve point nine unless there's a ton of exemptions and that would, I guess that would be a way of thinking about it. If we all get. Neighborhood rev- revitalization and all this, there's a lot of exemptions. So. That would, because we approve those exemptions, so we're, we're allowing them to keep that money that we've already approved, same with the city. And because they all approved that plan, that would make sense. Okay, cause we've allowed it to be exempted, yeah.
Another way to look at it is. We, we set the amount that we want levied. And so in order to do that, you look at the valuation, you calculate. From those two things, you can calculate the mill. The R and R sets the mill levy rate so that. If the valuation goes down, the mill levy rate can't go up, so the taxes will have to come down.
I don't know that we need.
Then money doesn't, the tax dollars levy doesn't go up either, just the mill levy number decreases because of.
Amount of taxes levy can never exceed. Amount that we put down. Once, if you approve the notice um of intent to exceed. We will put on that notice, the twelve million. Nine hundred and twenty eight, one thirty eight that we levied last year. And once you would approve that, then we could never raise more than that. So we'll bring you uh a TFA next month and see where it goes.
Any other questions?
Doesn't seem like a year already though. Like, didn't we just fight about this?
Candace Sullivan, Kansas, Candace is our budget analyst. He's gonna be our um driver, so to speak, for the. Uh for this athletic analysis. And um we have some other people here. Starting with Bill, we're gonna chime in and talk some about energy. We'll also have on Carter and Emma. Assistant A D providing information on this topic.
Thank you.
I, I work for Butler.
You work for Butler, okay.
Me just get logged in here to be able to share.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Candace Sullivan. That's okay.
You're in his crew.
Correct. I'm just getting logged back into it.
This is what you're gonna talk about.
I'm gonna show, I'm gonna do a demo of the athletics portion of the P's tool. So I believe Bill and uh TC who are here will talk to you about that graphic.
Also Jim, come along.
I think it was because I closed my computer. I'm sorry. It's okay. Okay. I didn't share my screen here. Perfect. All right. So like I said, I'm Candace Sullivan. I'm the budget analyst here for Butler County Community College. So thank you for allowing me to come. Uh to this work session. So good to meet you all. Um as I, as he had already said, I'm gonna be showing you the athletics portion of the P's tool by Forbus. Um keep in mind that you, Dr. Neville did a couple of weeks ago present on the academic portion. So you're gonna see a lot of things that are gonna look a little familiar for you, but I wanted to go ahead and present those as well. Um also, um as I'm presenting, if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me. If you have any questions or need a little deeper dive. Um myself and the rest of the finance team is here to help with any question.
Can you blow that up a little bit bigger? Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm sorry for you on the row. You have to turn around to see it. Oh, perfect. Good, good, good. All right. So the first thing that I want to talk about is um here with the P's tool. The athletic section is uh.
Just one thing when she says P's, well, it stands for program economic analysis, which is really more the academic part. This is the add-on to that strictly for athletics.
Right. So it is made up of three different dashboards. We have the athletic quadrant, the athletic economics and athletic trends. So I'm just gonna walk you through a demo of each. So as um you can see here, I'm starting on the athletic economics dashboard. This is the dashboard that I think really holds the meat and potatoes of the data. So what you're gonna see over all three dashboards is this parameters line here. So in the view choice, I'm gonna go ahead and select sports that we can see break down by each sport. We have the ability to look at total or per credit costs. I'm gonna keep that on total for now, but can toggle between. The other portion that I'm gonna talk about is our cost choice. So as you can see here, we have several different cost choices. How um they retain to athletics is when we talk about personnel, we're talking about only athletic personals. So um uh. Just anything payroll related that deals with that. Travel, we're talking about travel expenses for athletics only. Equipment, same thing. And then other is really encompassing all costs for the athletic program. So for the purpose of this demo, I'm gonna keep it on others. So we are just looking at what at athletic costs.
We don't have copies of that to look at while you're doing this or any copies that you'll be sharing after this.
I can, not at this time, as working demo.
I don't understand that. I mean, we, we really.
This will be recorded on YouTube. You can watch it later, right? And see the graphics.
Right. So uh, yeah, okay, thank you. Um and then the other two cost choice selections that we have is acad- athletic plus academic. With, which is any academic cost, which is just the good direct institutional cost there. And then athletic plus academic plus overhead. So that's encompassing all, all of the um cost choices here. Which also uh includes all institutional costs, which is like student services and stuff like that. So. Again, for this demo, I'm gonna go ahead and select other. So we're just looking at athletic costs. Much like the academic quadrants that you have seen, this is broken up into two different islands. So this first island here is a bar chore. So you can see that it's in descending order by net tuition. So football is the largest that we, for that tuition. So it's at the top with basketball teams at the bottom, men's and women's. The red line is our costs and the blue line is our revenue. So what is this all really equate to? If we go ahead and scroll down to the bottom, here's the actual dollar amounts associated with each. So our first column here is tuition choice, which is our net tuition plus state aid minus any um waivers of discounts like scholarships. Our cost choice is gonna be the dollar amount of the cost of that program for that, that sport. Our margin is simply just revenue minus expenses. So if you take any of these numbers minus each other, that's what you would get. On that. And then margin percentage is just that same number reflected in a percentage. Student enrollment is athlete count and then faculty and release percentage time is kind of irrelevant when it comes to academics. So well, we, we kind of ignore these two columns here, but I will go ahead. I did, I get some more information. On what those are actually breaking down for you. So the faculty percent- percentage is the credits taught by faculties or non adjunct. And then release time is percentage of teachers that are not teaching like load release for non uh teaching duties. So. So if we look at an example of this, I'm gonna go ahead and just pick women's cross country. And highlight that we can see that the net tuition brought in for fiscal year twenty twenty two was twenty one thousand, four hundred and twenty nine dollars. The cost of that sport was ten thousand, seven hundred and forty nine dollars, making the margin ten thousand, six hundred and eighty. And our margin for that particular sport at fifty percent. That's kind of how this portion works. We don't have any questions, so I'm gonna go ahead and show you the athletics trend portion and then we can kind of dive into anything that you guys.
If you're gonna come back to base now, why are basketball, men's and women's so out of touch with everything else, even sports of comparable participation?
Sure, sure. And actually, I might have let TC or Bill speak directly to that.
When you look at, at men's and women's basketball, um they also receive stipends, which goes, I mean, they get their books and tuition scholarship. They also have stipends um that help cover their room and board, but the room and board is not covered. In these expenses because it's just tuition. So the scholarship actually covers more than their books and tuition, it, but the rest of it goes towards their room and board. That makes sense?
Basically, they're getting more funding than the other athletes, bottom line.
Well, we give stipends, we have other sports and those athletes have stipends as well, but we don't give um. But they generate more credit hours than what men's and women's basketball does just because of sheer numbers. Um like you've got twelve men's basketball players and they have stipends, but because there's only twelve, they're not gonna generate. As many credit hours as like football does just because of the sheer numbers.
So does football not have as many athletes with stipends?
Correct.
Right.
Right. We have some football players with stipends. We have some football players that, that. Have in-state only scholarships and they may be an out-of-stater. So they generate more revenue and tuition.
Yeah. And what's included in the stipend? What's that?
It's just a, it's a cash stipend that goes on their account, but most of them use it to pay for their room and board.
Thank you.
So one thing, I don't know if we. Maybe I missed it, but the revenue side of this, I mean, the cost side is the cost of athletics, right? The revenue side is the amount that's generated from the student in tuition minus scholarship. So if they're in a full scholarship, they're not gonna, it's gonna add to zero plus state aid. So the majority of what you see here. Or um revenue is from state aid. And so I just want to make that clear. So. Also, while we're, you know, pause Julie, for your question about having hard copies, we would be able to make PDFs of any of these screens and shots, and we could provide those to you, maybe the basic ones here to start with, the basic graph and the numbers that go into those graphs. We don't have the ability, of course. I mean, the tool that, one of the benefits of the tool is to be able to drill down, so you can't really have copies and know where you're going to be drilling down to. But if there are, you know, major screens, we could provide those.
Maybe one question from the very beginning, beneath other, there was two steps down, does that include institutional costs like building, AC? I mean, insurance, all that kind of stuff as well, or is where we're at now just strictly the sports cost, but not?
Correct, so right now I just have it looking at athletic costs. We do have the abilities to drill down into those other costs.
I mean, teachers, administrators, all that, of all the classes.
And that'd be the last one, right?
Right, that. Encompassing everything.
We take a peek at that real quick? Can I just have one football point? I'm still unclear, why would the tuition choice for basketball be negative? Both those numbers reflect a negative.
Because the, the stipends are the way it's done in the formula system, scholarships and stipends are reductions of revenue. So they're actually getting a stipend and a scholarship that exceeds the amount that they are receiving, that we are receiving from their tuition and their state aid.
Okay, then, that.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the.
Can we just look at this?
Yeah, we just go to the.
Just the academic.
And then the one screen down that had the total, if you don't mind. And I don't want to mess you up at all.
Sure. So again, this is net tuition, this is our cost.
Okay. All right, that's all I'm curious about, so.
All right, I'm going to move on to the athletic.
I'm going to take a picture of that, if you don't mind.
Sure. And again, we can provide PDFs of this particular dashboard if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Got to quit saying B K D for this.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the athletic trends quadrant here. So the biggest difference between the athletic economics dashboard and the athletic trends is simply that there's just several years of data. And there, so it's almost exactly the same, the part, the, the graph here is a little different as well. So again, I have the view choice set by sport. I have it set to net tuition, but we can change that to cost as well, if you would like to see that. And then I'm going to go ahead and just switch our cost choice back to other, so we're just looking at athletic costs. So how you can interpret this graph is the size of the icon is based on account of student or athlete in this instance, so as you can see, the larger the icon is like football, the bigger the program is or the sport is, the smaller the icon like cross-country women's, i- is, is kind of how that equates. The Y axis, this is determined by what we select here, and I have selected net tuition. So the higher the icon appears on the graph, the more net tuition is brought in by that particular sport. The same can be said when we're talking about costs, which I will go ahead and toggle to that as well, so you could see that.
What do you think of this?
The tool or?
The tool.
I think it's a great tool, has a lot of information in there, that's, that's very useful.
I have a question for Bill. Is basketball the only sport that gets stipend?
No. We have football, basketball, volleyball, I think all, they're all, all of our sports have stipends.
Thank you.
Is it a certain percent for each one?
No, it depends on the, it depends on the athlete.
Depends on how bad you want the athlete here.
I see, that's more like it now.
Well, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we don't do the image and likeness thing at all.
Right.
But I mean, obviously, we're competing with, with athletes to try to get the best athletes here that we can, unless they're that good, they're also being offered scholarships and stipends and that kind of thing at other institutions as well, and.
So those basketball players are killing it, what that chart's saying.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the data portion, so again, much like the previous slide, this has the data portion here for real dollar amounts that goes across from F Y twenty nineteen to F Y twenty two. So just to show you as an example on how the dashboards work, I'm going to pick out women's cross country again. So here you can see in F Y twenty one, our net tuition, again, that is tuition plus state aid minus any scholarships and waivers was one thousand one hundred and ten dollars, whereas in twenty twenty two, this is that number that I showed you on the earlier slide, which is one one thousand four hundred and twenty nine. The same methodology goes across for each one of these as well. This slide's really great because it can show you how a program is doing at any, kind of where those ebbs and flows are as well, so. I'm going to go ahead and un-highlight that, so you can look at the data. But, and I will scroll down if you'd like to see the grand totals. There is something on that, so. What questions do you have on this?
Not really a question, just a comment, I, I appreciate you highlighting one, but to the folks at home, the one you're highlighting is the only one that has a profit that I can see. So just point that out, they're all negative, not to be negative, Nellie, but it's.
Sure, and we can, we can look at any of them.
Yeah, it's just the only one we've looked at so far is profitable one, and there's, that's the only one.
Very few sports are profitable.
I understand. Just pointing out.
I wouldn't personally see in football just for fun.
He was. Yeah, I mean, if you're at home listening, it's like, oh, hey, it's profitable, you'd have to really be paying attention and look closely to know that everything else isn't, that's.
Well, and I think it's also reflected in the graph above as well.
Right.
For that.
But that, again, on a video, it'd be real hard to see those side points, so if we're going to highlight something, I just think we need to highlight.
Sure.
A representative sample.
Sure.
So.
Does football, for example, do those numbers reflect revenue, the football program generates through ticket sales and through concessions and on whatever.
No, I don't.
Do each of these reflect the sport by sport revenues?
No, I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, we're just looking at tuition.
Okay, all right.
And state aid, yeah.
Right.
So these numbers would be the true net would be somewhat less than this because they're all generating some, well, not all, most are generating some revenue. Maybe not much, okay.
Exactly.
But then the true net, you'd have to include some of the total, total numbers, right?
Sure.
Because there's a lot of that.
Right, and I, I think in, in just a moment, as soon as we're done, we'll kind of dive into that a little bit as well. So if we have no more questions on this dashboard, I'm going to show you the last one, the athletic quadrant. Now, I'm going to be completely honest with you, this is probably my least favorite one, a dashboards of all of them, but they all have good information. And on here, you can see that this is, is a quadrant graph, so it's made up of four different boxes, and I'm sorry, I it's cutting off, so is it okay if I, if I go down a little bit there? So you can kind of see how that is plotted out, so it's made up of four quadrants here. So the Y axis is measure of size, so we have that set to net tuition, so the higher it is on the Y axis, the more tuition that it's brought in. When we're looking at the X axis here, this is margin percentage. So the top, how you can kind of equate, this is the top right quadrant is our biggest and most efficient, whereas the bottom left is our smallest and least efficient. Now I say that with a big caveat. It should be noticed that the biggest is not mean necessarily number students, but how much net tuition is brought in by that particular sport. And kind of like how we've already figured out, when you're looking at this graph, it makes it look like the basketball team is, you know, inefficient, small, but that's not really necessarily the case. This, this particular graph makes it a little hard to, to do apples to apples just because of the size being skewed. So, but I wanted to go ahead and show you this information as well on there, but if there are no other questions on this, I'm going to, I can move back to the athletic economics dashboard where we can look at more detailed information and then open it for Bill and T C to go over the handout that we provided to as well. Any, anything you would like to add?
Other than what we've already talked about in terms of the, the stipends.
Would the sorry, where you going?
Should we want to see?
So Bill, this, or maybe it's a question, this, does each coach have a budget for what they can allocate in stipends for their team, or is that is that player specific, and you're kind of going in and lobbying for more money to get a particular player, even if it's more than what you expected?
I'll let T C answer that one.
T C, keep close, grab one of the mics.
Yeah, esports got their own stipend amount, if they go over, then they have to fundraise for it, so it's pretty even amongst all the sports.
Okay.
We want everybody to be successful, not just, not just one.
Thank you. For instance, the football number, say if you click down twice on that, would that include the B K D stadium and our expenses there?
No.
So that would be. I said, I said B K D, yeah. The four of us, four of us stadium.
Any other questions for me at this?
Can you go to the last one where it has overhead included? Please.
Absolutely. And here, if you would like me to highlight football team, I can as.
Can you even enlarge it, please?
Sure, thank you.
Just to not scare anybody, I'm not trying to cut football, I just wanted to know what's what for yours, just so we can have more informed discussion about it.
Right, this is extremely.
I'm not on a, a hunt to find some, something that looks bad and chop something off, I just the more you know, you know.
I'm a little surprised those numbers for football don't include things like. You know, that's part of the total cost, and I guess.
But it wouldn't be football.
Right.
Track, track would be part of that.
Soccer, right.
There's lots.
Along with, along with the different percentage of use, like the football team uses forty percent track, thirty, main spirit squad. All of them, all of that, it would be nice to know those kind of details. And again, this is nothing to do with micromanagement, this is, we need to know what each sport is costing college. And so that we can speak to that when people ask us, how much is this cost? And also the fact that, you know, like the city pays for part of that, card makes a part of that.
So. School district pays for part of it.
So do we have a hundred and sixty athletes playing football? That's that number six five.
There's another extra one over there, just want to make yourself at home.
But half the team leaves in December. And so then you have another forty or fifty kids come in in January. They grad, they graduate or get scholarships go to the next level. And so that number's kind of misleading, we, we start out probably with a hundred. Yeah, for eighty-five scholarships. Thanks.
Now. Through NCAA, are we limited to the number of scholarships per sport?
The N J C double.
N J C double A, like.
There's limits, yes.
Because I didn't realize that in the NCAA baseball, that there's only eleven point seven scholarships per per baseball team.
That's the NCAA.
Yeah.
So how many walk, walk-ons do you have for sports?
It, it certainly varies.
So how, is that figured in there too?
It would, it would be in, in tuition revenue. If they walk on, I mean, obviously, they don't have any scholarship counting against that, so, right.
We're not trying to get into.
Oh, you're not.
We've just been waiting for this kind of detail.
Three and a half years.
With the track or cross-country, are they like in-state tuition, out-of-state tuition, would that make their, what they the revenue in versus their expenses a little higher if they're out of state? I don't know, the composition of a.
And if, if the scholarship stays only covering in-state.
Is this count concession so that each game two?
So that. No, but the handout that we provided, I'm going to just switch screens real quick, so you can see it on here as well. We do have that put in, so that is part of the F Y twenty-two Grizzly backers total.
You need to.
Sorry, I didn't.
Part of your screen.
Oh, this is some additional revenues that come in.
Yeah. It's about time for renewal process to start, isn't it? That's just right around the corner.
So just to.
Be expecting a telephone call.
So just to kind of elaborate a little bit about your question, Mary, so that F Y twenty-two Grizzly backers number includes ticket sales, gate receipts, general sales, yearbook ads, radio ads, fundraising, any other, you know, the Mount Noiser feed and, and concessions.
So does any of the fundraising go into those totals?
In the, in the P's tool?
No. This is all extra, in addition to what's in that chart.
Right.
This would be total revenues generated, not included in the.
Correct, and this is, this for all sports.
Correct, so when you look at the overall cost, you would need to add back into six hundred.
If you took out the four and a half million negative, the total number, you back out six hundred thousand.
Right, and really for act, for athletics, it would be, I think it was two point three, so that's just the athletics expenses.
That didn't also include the.
Yeah.
What are the dollars for fundraising?
I believe that was heard in seventy.
It varies from a hundred and fifty to about seventy-five. And would the expenses also include like our bus and then a couple thousand dollars to go back and forth through game for show, I don't know, the services.
Travel was. Is in there as well.
Because we have a bus that probably is with, with travel anywhere that I know, because it's kind of like it's a release expense.
What done the football team, aren't they in their contract with Village Tours, so we don't necessarily own a bus? I mean, we.
The smaller sports use that.
Yeah.
We approved on a few years ago, for like eighty grand.
Right, it seats what, thirty-five? Forty-five people.
Is it in here anywhere, the cost of that?
Cost of the bus cannot be in there, there is. So these done charge for travel and buying, I'm not sure it's, give me a name, a new charge. Each sport might charge, so there's a accounting transfers made there. In athletics, charge.
I really appreciate being shown all this. Being able to ask questions.
Any other comments or questions or anything about?
No, we just like to see more of them.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Very interesting.
So I have three more items. And said, yeah, that's it, yeah, that's it for the night, so we don't have to adjourn, it's a work session, so thanks, everybody, for sticking around a little later, thanks, everybody, for being here to help us learn this stuff.